Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Joe, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Frericks. Ms. Seabans. Ms. Harland.
Here.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Ms. Vogt.
Here.
Mr. Rock. Mr. Burris.
Here.
Mr. Burris. Mr. Coon.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum.
Tammy is here, you know. She's muted. She doesn't realize that, so she can't talk.
About that.
Gavin, Kayla, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Public participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding office of the mayor. At this time, members of the public are able to, are not able to attend, or are able to attend by web conference and to submit public comment by email, voicemail, or through web conference. Public comments must comply with all adopted rules and be limited to five minutes or less. The city clerk will arrange to have one email or voicemail per person presented for up to five minutes each. Web conference participants should ask to be recognized for public comment by using the chat function. Access to City Hall and Council chambers will not be permitted. Please provide any comments in one of the available means listed above. Joe, I think you have letters to read into the minutes.
I do. Okay. First letter. Dear City officials and steward, I read with great interest and concern this story in this week's Journal Republican about the decision to move forward with feasibility studies exploring acquisition of the North State Street Professional Building in order to move Monticello City Hall and Police Department into that building. I worry about the implications foreseeable and unforeseeable of the contemplated move of these core city functions away from their natural locus in the downtown area and into what should be a carefully protected historic district. I urge you to take seriously the sincere, public-minded concerns that have already been voiced by residents of the North State Street Historical District, which are shared by other members of the larger Monticello and Payette County community, such as myself and my wife Rhonda. I grew up in East Central Illinois in Crispin, where my mom and brother still live, and Rhonda and I met at the University of Illinois in the 1980s. We moved back to East Central Illinois in 2004 when I joined the Illinois faculty, and at that time, we chose to make our home in Monticello and have our five children educated in the Monticello Public School System, precisely because Monticello is such a gem of a small-town community. Through careful and wise stewardship, Monticello has maintained all of the best features that once characterized the small-town community life that both Rhonda and I grew up in, but that have largely and sadly disappeared elsewhere. Such decline, moreover, does not happen all at once. It occurs gradually and incrementally through a series of, oftentimes seemingly small and inconsequential circumstances and compromises that collectively conspire over time to irretrievably degrade the character of a place. I fear that the contemplated move of Monticello City Hall and Police Department is a move in the direction of undermining the integrity of two of Monticello's greatest assets, both its vibrant downtown area, where City Hall and the Police Department should be located, and the unique North State Street Historic District, which is all too easily compromised without deliberate and diligent effort to maintain its idyllic beauty and charm. Moreover, the significant effort and expense involved in effectuating such a major relocation begets inertia that fosters permanency even in the face of unexpected adverse consequences. Flirting with such risks seems unjustified, particularly if there are other feasible alternatives that would keep City Hall and the Police Department in the downtown area, such as the Monticello Community Building, itself a historic treasure that is in peril of opening another hole in our wonderful downtown, to the extent that that building remains underutilized. The opportunity to purchase the North State Street Professional Building at such a low price might seem like a bargain that is too good to pass on. The costs that are not reflected in a stated purchase price, however, are frequently more significant and, because they are extremely hard to anticipate and quantify, are easily overlooked and/or understated. I urge you to be mindful of the significant risk that the proposed relocation of City Hall poses for the entire Monticello and Payette County community. Sincerely, Ralph Brubaker.
May I interrupt for just a second? There's extraneous noise coming through, and I think it might be the people who are call-ins. It's fine to be called in, but you have to understand that if you, if you talk or make noise, it interrupts the flow of the meeting. So if you could just, you know, kind of watch yourselves a little bit, it would be appreciated. You may go ahead, Joe.
Thank you. Second letter. Dear City of Monticello officials, I have never before written to this or any city, so please pardon my errors of etiquette. This time, I feel like I must speak up. I am a bit late voicing my views on this matter because, like most of us, I have been living under a rock. I have read in the local newspaper about the city's interest in pursuing a move of the city offices and the Police Department to the office space in the 1,000 block of North State Street. Confused by the city's desire to do so, I consulted the Fountain of All Wisdom, Facebook, to find out what anyone else knew about the factors being considered that weren't published in the newspaper. There sure are a lot of people in this town who have opinions and are quite willing to share them, whether publicly or privately. After this pursuit of knowledge, I am left with several questions. Number one, why would you want to move the city offices and police headquarters further from the center of town? Granted, I'm still a little salty about the library being moved to Western Timbuktu a few years back, but it seems to me that this decentralizes things even further, sending yet another essential city operation sprawling into a residential neighborhood. Number two, and speaking of that neighborhood, why would you want to do anything to increase operational traffic into what is arguably the most iconic, iconic historic district of this community? It seems to me that maintaining its quaint, walkable, gawking-at-the-gorgeous-houses character ought to be higher on the to-do list. Number three, and speaking of a to-do list, if you're looking for something to do with those hideous office buildings in the 1,000 block of North State Street, how about you tear them down and create some green space? A mindful, meditative space, something that enhances the neighborhood. I appreciate the work you do to keep this community running smoothly, maintaining the charming character which draws us all to want to live here and proudly show it off to out-of-town visitors. Let's keep it that way. Sincerely yours, Janet Ruckman. The next third letter. Dear Mayor Stoner, on behalf of my clients and other residents of the North State Street Neighborhood, I want to express their thanks and appreciation to the City Council for the constructive and courteous dialogue concerning the city's nascent plan to relocate its administrative offices and Police Department to the former Kirby Professional Building on North State Street. Part of that dialogue has revolved around the North State Street Neighborhood Group's suggestion that use of the downtown community building for the relocation is not only an aesthetically and socially superior alternative to the Kirby property, but may prove to be a financially attractive option as well. Today, my clients expressly commit to pledge no less than $25,000 for the renovation of the interior of the community building to meet the needs of the city administration and police staff once the city has committed to such renovation for that purpose. Such funds will be made available at such time and in such form as the city requires. As you may be aware, additional funds are being sought for this purpose. As a result, the city now has added substantial incentives to demonstrate its commitment to its 20-year comprehensive plan. Part of that incentive is that it would have not less than $45,000, consisting of the $25,000 so pledged, plus the $20,000 not spent on acquiring the Kirby property, available to renovate the interior of the community building without spending a dime more than it has already committed to the transfer project. Moreover, moving to the community building confers other benefits on the city's taxpayers. First, the city obviously avoids the cost of renovating and maintaining the Kirby property, including any costs of further feasibility studies relating to acquisition or renovation of the Kirby property. Second, the city avoids the cost of maintaining the exterior of the community building, since maintaining the exterior of the community building would remain the responsibility of the Community Building Board. Finally, the Kirby property would remain available for positive use by other transferees of the hospital that would return the property to the tax rolls. Please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions or suggestions. Very truly yours, Philip Van Ness with Weber &amp; Thies or Thies Law Firm. Okay, the next one. Regarding the Monticello City Hall, Monticello Police Department relocation, the Monticello Main Street Board has adopted the following statement. "Monticello Main Street, in accordance with our core mission, which is to promote and strengthen downtown Monticello, economic development through historic preservation, encourages any effort to expand the Monticello City Hall and Police Department to prioritize possibilities within the downtown Historic District, Monticello Main Street District. Sincerely, Michelle Crawford Stock, Executive Director, Monticello Main Street." Next letter. To the Monticello City Council. Hello, we would like to thank our aldermen for meeting via teleconference with us this past week. Just a note to reiterate to the Monticello City Council that we are opposed to further spending of our resources on due diligence or purpose of the 1109 North State Street for City Hall and/or Police Station use. We request the City Council cease pursuit of this move as we believe Monticello would be better served and present a more cohesive community by keeping the municipal buildings and duties downtown. Thank you, Ted and Catherine Bachmann. Next letter. Dear Monticello City Council members, I am writing to express my opposition to the proposed move of the Monticello City Hall and Police Department to the Kirby Professional Building. My husband and I moved to Monticello in 1992 because we were drawn to the quaint downtown area, the historic homes, and the community aesthetics. I have built a career here as a high school social studies teacher, and we raised our children here. In 2002, we purchased a home at 1016 North State Street and have worked hard to restore the home to its original grandeur. It is situated directly across the street from the former Kirby Hospital. We have noticed and currently enjoy the significant reduction in traffic since the relocation of Kirby Hospital and Carl Clinic. The traffic in this part of Monticello is now in line with that of a residential area as opposed to a commercial area, restoring it to what it once was. We enjoy our quiet neighborhood, which is perfect for residents and visitors walking through the neighborhood, as well as the circuit, Downstate Street to Township Road to the bike trail and into other neighborhoods in the community. We see so many families enjoying the neighborhood on a daily basis, it is hard to count. In the summer, kids ride their bikes on the sidewalks on their way to the ballparks at Forest Preserve Park. Residents of the Payette County Nursing Home enjoy rides in Tri-Shaw bikes and line the street in lawn chairs to watch the Payette County Trailblazer Parade every summer. In addition to the regular foot traffic on this stretch of North State Street, our senior citizens also need to be considered. Would City Hall be a good neighbor for our Payette County Nursing Home? Moving the City Hall and the Police Department to North State Street will not only dramatically change our neighborhood, but it will also alter our downtown and our unique small community. Successful small towns maintain the downtown area as an anchor for business and local government. I am concerned with what will become of the current City Hall building. Will it remain mainly vacant, as does the community building that used to house the library? Has consideration been given to utilizing the community building to meet the needs of city government and the Police Department? To help understand the need, I feel it would be beneficial for the entire community to see and understand the city space and structure requirements that support relocation of these two departments and how that fits into the long-term comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2014. It is extremely important to adhere to the long-term plan as best we can as opposed to acting upon individual solutions that do not achieve the ultimate goal of enhancing, celebrating, and preserving our historic community. Successful small towns capitalize on their assets and work in cooperation with its neighbors for their shared mutual benefit. Moving the City Hall and the Police Department to North State Street will not benefit the neighborhood and will only continue to deplete the downtown area of its crucial role as anchor for commercial and government business. This will further lead to Monticello losing its small-town charm and appeal. As a North State Street resident, Monticello community member, and a person who values history, I strongly urge you to reconsider this move and look for a better solution that fits the long-term city planning and needs of our strong community. Sincerely, Tana Espenshey. And this is the last letter I have. How many of us have loaded our families in the car dressed as ghosts and goblins to trick-or-treat on State Street? With the rustle and smell of the leaves as we stroll down the sidewalk, hoping to catch a glimpse inside one of the historic and beautiful homes. Winter State Street will make even the biggest Scrooge take notice. You can't magic of seeing historic State Street dusted with sparkling snow. Magic that you only see in a John Hughes movie. Taking in the Christmas lights on State Street during the holidays is on all our family's to-do lists. There isn't a time or a season when Monticello won't need State Street. This is not just any street. This street stands for something. This street represents our local history, our future, and is the epitome of the American dream. While moving the civic functions may not be the end of the world, and yes, we do have some pretty big issues we are all coping with right now. Sorry about that, that was the timer from the last one, so I'm still finishing this one. The street represents our local history, our future, and is the epitome of the American dream. While moving the civic functions may not be the end of the world, and yes, we do have some pretty big issues we are all coping with right now, can we just leave this national historic neighborhood as it is? Quiet, residential, and a little piece of the way things used to be. Sincerely yours, Misty K. Borhart. That's all the letters I have.
Thank you. Any public participation from those that have called in? Anyone want to make public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Steve Schreffler here, I would like to.
Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you. I've attended all these meetings and listened carefully, and the only people that I've heard of that are in favor of this, this plan to City Hall and Fire and the Police Department have been city staff. City Council needs to be the adults in the room, because city staff, there's no end to the, the pet projects that they would like to have, and it's understandable, especially when they look at the city balances. However, it is, as far as I can tell, it's unanimous from the taxpayers that nobody's in favor of this, and in 30 years of attending meetings and following the city government, I can't remember a time that there's been this much unanimous opposition to a, to a plan. So I hope that wisdom will prevail. The, if the, if the City of Monticello administration is considering any project, probably the wisest project would be the creation of a Monticello library. There's a building perfectly suited for it in the community building, and that would be something that would benefit the citizens of Monticello a whole lot more than moving the City Hall and Police Department. Basically, right now is a, I don't know, it's a pretty uncertain time to be spending money. I, I haven't heard yet, but I'm sure that the income to the city through taxes and other sources is diminished because of the COVID-19 thing, and so a person would have to question the wisdom of spending money that we don't need on something that we probably don't, or money we don't have on something we don't need. So I would, I would, I would encourage caution if, if there's any thought of, of moving forward with this. And I'd also like to hear from somebody at some point what the proposed budget is for this, because it, it's, you know, impulse purchases almost always result in buyer's remorse. And, you know, I, if I understand what I've seen on the claims, you've already spent more than $20,000 just considering this project. And I hate to think what the total package would cost after you got the building and remodeled it to, to suit your needs. I've already made other arguments against it in the past, I'm not going to repeat those. But there are other alternatives available to you if you really do need, you need more space than what you already have, which is questionable. Everybody wants more space, believe me, I could use more bays in my garage for cars. But anyway, that's all I have to say. I just hope that you will consider what the people have to say and, and be responsible in your decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schreffler, anyone else? Anyone else have public comment? And for the third and last time, anyone want to make public comment before we move on? Hearing or seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Three, Consent Agenda. Approval of Documents and Action Items is listed. Claims Report. Claims dated April 14, 2020 through April 27, 2020. Meeting Minutes. City Council Meeting Minutes, April 13, 2020. Police Report, March 2020. Treasurers Report, March 2020. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mike Coon, is there a second?
Second, Tammy.
Tammy?
Second.
Any comments or questions before we vote? Hearing or seeing none. Let's have a roll call, please. Joe?
Mr. Frericks.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Seabans.
Yes.
Ms. Harland.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Ms. Vogt.
Yes.
Mr. Burris. Mr. Burris. And Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Yes.
Passes?
Yes. Yes.
Motion passes.
You guys can't hear me?
Now I can. Thank you. This, there will be no mayor's report this evening. Let's move on to New Business. Public Hearing. Downstate Small Business Stabilization Grant Program. I call this public hearing to order. Kelly Jo has some information that she needs to share with us before we begin our, our hearing.
Yes, for the sake of efficiency, a lot of what I will cover this portion is also relative to. So you might. All right. So the overview of the project, the State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity has reallocated U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Community Development Block Grant Funds in the amount of $20 million to be used for the Downstate Small Business Stabilization Grant Program, providing assistance to businesses impacted by. Counties and municipalities which are designated as non-entitlement may apply on behalf of an eligible business for funding in the form of a grant. The funds may not exceed $25,000 per business and must be used for working capital expenses based upon 60 days of estimated cost once the business has opened up or resumes full operation. To date, or for the purpose of this hearing, the city has completed three applications, one for Fieldhouse 219 LLC in the amount of $25,000, Free Ravens Incorporated in the amount of $25,000, and the Fitness Center for the amount of $18,589.36. These amounts will cover working capital expenses such as rent or mortgage, inventory purchases, utilities, and payroll. Businesses must reopen or return to normal operation within one year of the grant award. Documentation and proof of payment for eligible expenses for reimbursement of the grant which the city has to take on. The city of Monticello prides itself in supporting local businesses where possible. One of the consistent goals is to promote and encourage fair housing and business practices within our community in both current and future. The health and continuation of our local businesses is a direct reflection. So to give an overview, the amount requested is based on a 60-day estimate of expenses. The applicant had to provide their January expenses for the application, and then the state requires us to determine that 60-day estimate. So each applicant, I'm going to go through what they have requested and what they would be eligible for. First is Fieldhouse 219 LLC, which is at 219 West Washington in downtown Monticello. Fieldhouse is a local restaurant and bar that has been part of the Monticello community since opening in October of 2012, excuse me, 2015, and normally employs 12. While they are considered essential, Fieldhouse remained open for three weeks after the executive order was in place, offering just curbside pickup service. Unfortunately, the owner has temporarily closed the business until the shelter-in-place restrictions have been lifted. Total January expenses were $34,277.95. We are asking for the maximum grant award, which is capped at $25,000. This is, the cost, or the grant would cover working capital costs for rent, payroll, utility bills, and inventory supplies. The business has provided all necessary documents for the grant application. The second applicant is Free Ravens Incorporated, located at 108 South Charter Street in downtown. Free Ravens has been in the Monticello downtown since opening in March of 20, excuse me, 2009, normally employing 24 people. They are considered essential, but they have had to significantly decrease their operation to just curbside and delivery due to the shelter-in-place restrictions. Total January expenses were $41,837.50. They are asking, or we are asking for the maximum grant award of $25,000, which again is the cap. The cost would cover, the grant would cover working capital costs for rent, payroll, utility bills, and inventory. for rent, payroll, utility bills, and inventory supplies. The business has provided all necessary documents for the grant application. And the third applicant is the Fitness Center at 1752 North Market Street. They are a physical fitness training facility and have been in Monticello since opening in 2012, normally employing seven individuals. The Fitness Center is defined as nonessential and cannot operate due to the shelter-in-place restrictions. Total January expenses were $9,294.68. So we are requesting 60 days, which would be double that, of $18,589.36. Those costs, those, the grant would cover mortgage, payroll, utility bills, and, once the business is allowed to reopen. The business has provided all the necessary documents for the grant application. Notice of the public hearing was published in the April 15th edition of the Pike County General Republican, and all three applications have been available for the public review from May, excuse me, April 20th through today. No public comment has been brought to my attention to date. Mayor, before you open it to public comment, because we have to have some pretty strict guidelines as it relates to the public hearing component of this, and we are doing this obviously remotely, I would ask any speaker to state your name and also your relation, if you're a resident, if you're a business owner, and so forth.
Thank you, Callie. Is there anyone that wants to make a statement at the public hearing? Is there anyone who wishes to make a statement?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Steve Schreffler here.
Okay, Steve.
Just for clarification, these funds are coming from the federal government? They're not coming from the city?
They're not coming from the city. They are from the federal government allocated to the State of Illinois.
Okay. That's all. I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question or a comment to make? Anyone have a comment or question? Anyone have a comment or question? Hearing or seeing none, I hereby call the public hearing concluded. Okay? Moving on. Resolution 2020-18, a resolution approving support of the Fieldhouse 219 LLC within the Downstate Small Business Stabilization Program. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to say a big thank you to Callie for, I couldn't count the number of hours she's spent on this with all of our businesses throughout the community. I know of several emails that were sent out at 2:00 a.m. and 3:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. and so on and so forth. So sincere appreciation to Callie for all of her efforts. And I will hand over Resolution 2020-18, 2020-19, and 2020-22 to Callie.
Thank you, Terry. Resolution 2020-18 is in support of applying for this grant on behalf of Fieldhouse 219 LLC. I've already reviewed about the grant, just a very general overview anyway. And the grant amount would be, request would be for $25,000 from the State of Illinois. The resolution, it's pretty bland, pretty short. But if you have any questions, please let me know.
Questions? Next, we have to do, do we have to consider these one at a time, Terry, or is it a block? Or we have to do it one at a time?
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2020-18, a resolution approving support of the Fieldhouse 219 LLC within the Downstate Small Business Stabilization Program? Mike, is there a second?
Second. Tammy.
Tammy, thank you. Any comments, questions before we vote? Hearing or seeing none, can I have a roll call, please, Joe?
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
This vote?
Yes.
Mr. Burris? And Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes?
Thank you. Callie, would you like to proceed?
Sure. Resolution 2020-19, similar thing, just in support of Free Ravens for the amount up to $25,000 to be used for 60 days of working capital expenses.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2020-19, a resolution approving support of Free Ravens Incorporated within the Downstate Small Business Stabilization Program?
Don't move.
Don't move. It's Tom.
Tom, is there a second?
Mary, second.
Mary, thank you. Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, a roll call, please, Joe?
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
This vote?
Yes.
Mr. Burris? Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Burris is on mute.
Mr. Burris is on mute. Rodney, do you have a vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
I voted yes.
Thank you. Callie Jo?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2020-20 is a resolution in support of, again, the same grant for Downstate Small Business Stabilization Program grant for the Fitness Center in the amount of $18,589.36.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2020-20, a resolution approving support of the Fitness Center within the Downstate Small Business Stabilization Program?
It's moved.
Mike's moved and Tammy seconded?
Sure.
Any, any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, Joe, I need a roll call, please.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Bo?
Yes.
Mr. Burris? Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Mr. Burris, thumbs up or thumbs down? Yes, I read his lips.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are you not hearing me at all?
No.
Now. Now we do.
Delayed.
Are you in another state? Yikes. Okay, moving along. Resolution 2020-21, a resolution approving a First Amendment to the Temporary License Agreement between the City of Monticello and Spencer Atkins concerning the properties commonly known as Fort 16 West Washington and 202 North Park, Monticello, Illinois. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier this year, we entered into an agreement with Spencer Atkins for this Pepsen Hill redevelopment project. Staff has been working, at least until recently, diligently to provide Mr. Atkins with valuable information on water and sewer and, and so on and so forth. So Callie has been working with Mr. Atkins a great deal. And I'll hand Resolution 2020-21 off to Callie.
Thank you, Terry. So like Terry said, our initial agreement for a temporary license agreement with Mr. Atkins was for 60 days, which was, would have expired or did expire April 24th this past Friday. That was to allow Mr. Atkins a chance to gather some more detailed information and do his due diligence, which would then in turn give the city staff an opportunity to review it a little more, determine its feasibility, and so forth. However, because the shelter-in-place restrictions happened about 30 days into that agreement, we've kind of been a little bit delayed, and it's been very difficult to get the information on a timely manner. So we are requesting a 60-day extension for this temporary license agreement, hoping we can go back to normal here shortly. And at least we have some more time to evaluate and provide him the information he needs, and he can provide us the information that we need.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2021, a resolution approving a First Amendment to the Temporary License Agreement between the City of Monticello and Spencer Atkins concerning the properties commonly known as Fort 16 West Washington and 203 North Park Street, Monticello, Illinois?
Don't move. John Perk.
Thank you, John. Is there a second?
Second, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, Jill?
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Bo?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes. It works. Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Nothing like high tech, that's what I say. Moving on. Resolution 20... I don't know why I'm here, and I feel like I was spotted. Resolution 2020-22, a resolution adopting the Families First Coro- Coronavirus Response Act policy and excluding emergency responders from certain provisions. Mr. Summers?
Thank you, Mayor Stoner. Pursuant to the Presidential National Emergency Declaration, on a family first. Coronavirus Act into law requiring employers to provide employees with partially paid sick and emergency leave through the end of 2020 due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The attached exhibit creates the policy for the employees and details the administration for such leave under this policy. This proposed policy excludes all emergency responders. It is recommended that the City Council further discuss and approve Resolution 2020-22, including Exhibit 1 as attached and presented. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2020-22, a resolution adopting the Families First Corona- virus Response Act policy and excluding emergency responders from certain provisions?
Don't move.
Thank you, Mary. Is there a second?
Tammy, second.
Tammy, thank you. Any comments or questions before we proceed? Questions or comments? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call, please, Joe?
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
This vote?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Patient. Yes. Yes.
And Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on, Alderman's reports. I'll go to Mike Coon first.
As mentioned in one of the letters, Tom and I met with, over a conference call with the members of the State Street homeowners and expressing some of the same concerns we've heard over the last couple of council meetings. The meeting I thought was very productive, is very well organized. It lasted about 90 minutes, and everybody was able to express their concerns. And, and Tom and I, you know, listened and clarified when needed. And we will bring recommendations to the council at our next meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Reed?
Yes. I'll just back up what Mike said. Felt like we had a very good meeting with the group from North State Street. And again, went very well. And as he indicates, we'll be bringing some, you know, information, which has really been stated in all the letters to you and the council for consideration, I guess, later on.
Thank you. Tammy Stevens?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mary, vote?
I just wanted to express my appreciation for the residents in Ward 1 who reached out to share their concerns and with the, the City Hall moving to the North State Street location. I was contacted via phone and email, and it just, it's nice to have productive conversations and hear what our residents are thinking and have the opportunity for open conversations.
Okay, thank you. John Frericks?
Like Mary said, thank you to the residents who've called, have had some really good conversations with some of the residents and some of the leaders of some other organizations that have expressed some, some interest and have some questions. And I just want to make sure we say that if you have questions, be sure to contact your alderman. And, and don't go to the, the ever faithful fountain of Facebook with your, with your questions, because it's, I think you need to hear it firsthand from your alderman. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Rodney Burris? He has none this evening. Thank you. Pam Harland?
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Nothing from you tonight. Have I missed anyone? I don't think so. Chief Carter?
Yes, a couple of things. We, for Shabbat of the Cup, we've started our flag sales. The first flag will go up Memorial Day in May. So if you want a flag, make sure you get ahold of us and we'll get that set up for you. Also, we put out on Facebook the other day to help pay for the seniors' fees, not just lunch fees, but book fees, registration fees, all that. And within a matter of minutes, we had it covered. So all the seniors' school fees were covered this year. I want to thank the citizens that did that. So that's all I wanted to pass on.
Thank you very much. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few items to talk about tonight. First one, Alderman Coon brought a couple of questions to me or staff at the last meeting. I spoke with Alderman Coon, but wanted to make sure that the entire council here, heard this. One of the concerns was ponding or stagnant water on our property, the 30-acre recreation site out by Apple Tree. That water, those little small localized ponding of stormwater, those are on our mosquito abatement program, as well as other areas throughout town. So we, we take special attention to those areas and treat those for mosquitoes. And then the street light at Green Apple Lane and Old Route 47. I will be getting with AMR and IP to see what that would entail in the very near future. Nigent flushing is underway. It started Sunday evening and will continue through the rest of this week. Residents will witness discoloration in their water. They need to just run cold water for 10 or 15 minutes and it should clear up. The spring cleanup weekend is still scheduled for May 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. That's next Friday, or this coming Friday and Saturday and Sunday. Hours are 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Masks, face coverings are required. Um, mask, face coverings are required. Uh, summer recreation programs, uh, I've been meeting with uh, Recreation Director uh, Carlos McClellan and Assistant Recreation Director Mandy Condes. Um, we will be making um, a final decision on our rec programs, all of our rec programs here. Um, hopefully in the next three to four weeks, we'll kind of see how things play out. And I would like to again, thank city staff, um, Clerk Jill Potts, uh, Moramet Cav for all their efforts in uh, another remote meeting, it looks like we'll have at least two more of these to uh, deal with. Um, so I, I like to thank all the city staff and all the public works department for all of their efforts. Um, it's, it truly is unprecedented times, and everybody's doing a whale of a job, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Terry. Does anyone else have anything they want to say? Hearing nothing, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move, John Ferg.
Thank you, John, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Tammy. Any, any, well, there's no discussion on this, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. See you two weeks, uh, please keep in contact, if you need me for anything, if you need quite, you need to ask, ask questions, please don't hesitate to call me, alright? Thank you all for your efforts this evening. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.